For the folks that are on Zoom, you've got a technical issue they're trying to sort out here. So we'll get started in just a sec.
Yeah, or even, um, you wouldn't talk about it. So there's anything to talk about when you saw for the time and just offer the one thing next time I had some impact.
Yeah, I tell you what, what I think is concerning me is the amount of people coming in. There's a lot of, you don't see these deals that I wish I had. I'm physically afraid. All of our roads going low. You know, I would like to see the interaction with everybody and say. But when these loans are going to be approved in time of times, because you know what I see a lot of now, depending on how long this one makes it difficult, I don't know if it's time to pay. I was like, yeah, for the show on the map I love. Uh, it's not my fault. But when I did know the passion a lot, I didn't want to go off. So that's definitely one thing that I'm trying to do sometimes. When you think of places to do it before, you know, the transaction itself will probably be a little short. Uh, the new transaction, sitting hours at home in the back. You know, I, I, I think we need to explain again, we're talking way too much. You have to lie to us. We have to, as you think of, I'm going to sit five minutes for a while in here. You know, since we're very concerned about security, having more than people in the public sphere, I mean, I think that's, that's, that's what we're doing. It's like, well, see. So, um, any process, I mean, so that's not right now, that's not a conversation. Either way, I agree. I mean, there are three elements that want to be there. So I would definitely agree.
So hang on.
I wonder, one of the one, um, and some of these allow the first years, um, when you call in additional reading.
That's our process. Well, it's not even an additional read. Our, we have a process in place. Process is first read, which is just getting it on the record. It's exactly been an application. If we want to defer action, we can defer action. We can defer action as long as we want. So all the answers that people have are, are, all the questions people have are answered. And, and the thing we have to be careful about is just change the process that's in our code. Just, no, we don't want to do that that way. It's done, right? It's, it's the kind of thing. Well, no, and I mean, you know, you've already said three things today that I don't even recognize from the zoning. So I mean, I get it. But the point is, we have a process, you know, you know, there is a way to slow things down until everybody's questions are answered. And that's what we do. And we've deferred things before when there were questions that people didn't have to answer. So totally agree that that's a good process. And we also had a conversation about things that we might want to do differently to have a longer process just be our rule. And we should have that conversation too. If anybody wants to be specific about that, we can get something that we can talk about, about changing our code. Do that. But right now our code is what it is. And the way that you slow the process down now is by deferring decision on something. This is just the first read. This is not giving anybody the right to do anything, right? There's no vote happening today. It's just getting it on the system. Right now, we have no.
And knowing that we can still, I'm okay with that. The applicant is here, he's here. I'm not buying any of those, as long as we have that on the, we, we, we.
We always have that option. Anybody else have any thoughts on this? Ruby, Camille? Well, I, I, I'm just going around the horn. Yeah, it's all right.
I'm, I'm okay with the country, you know, but I think that I was a teenager and that, uh, doing this was fine.
We talked about that at the work session. We all agreed with that. Camille, you have any thoughts?
I think, yeah, I think it's already, it's all that that might be. I'm something that is very wrong to, uh, having some time to, you know. Not, not even one, 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 but.
I mean, again, I, I, I agree that it's important. It is always important and it's always been our process here. To delay things if we're not clear, right? Not, not only do we all agree, because there will be times that we disagree, but as long as everybody's had their questions answered and making their decisions based on having their questions answered. Then we're doing the right thing. This is a big project. It wouldn't surprise me at all if it got deferred because there are a lot of questions unanswered. And again, there's a timeline issue already about public meetings that the applicant's committed to. And, you know, if those happen timely and this, whatever, I mean, like, we all agree on that. We all agree on that. But the first read is what starts the process and that's just where our zoning is written. And no, I don't think we should put off the first read. Um, so again, we have a motion and a second on the table. Um. And I don't know, you know, we could vote on an amendment of that motion, or we could just vote on the motion. I'm asking the group up here what they'd rather do. Okay, let's. So I, we have an amendment on the floor to not do the first read tonight. Um, is there a second for that? We have an amendment and a second. Any discussion around that? Again, I think we've already talked about this. So all in favor of not doing the first read tonight, this is happening. All opposed, nay? It's, that does not carry for. That doesn't carry. And so the next thing is the actual motion we had, which is motion to adopt the approved meeting agenda. And I think we had a first and a second on that, right? So all those in favor of adopting the agenda, please say aye. Those opposed, nay? And next is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of September 7th. Uh, can I get a motion and a second, please, to approve those minutes? We have a motion and a second. Anybody need anything changed in those or anything else anybody wants on them? All those in favor of adopting the minutes of the regular meeting of September 7th, please say aye. Those opposed, nay? Minutes stand adopted. Uh, next up is a presentation. Can we, can we put it closer to the microphone or something? I mean, to the speaker? Where's the speaker? I mean, we're doing the best we can. Let's, yes. All right. Uh, anyway, Greg, sorry, that, Greg has a, an important appointment. Tonight, tonight. Yeah. You need the microphone though?
Okay. Jake, the character and Devin, the character, we need one year, what?
Yeah.
I'm allowed to talk for a minute. All marks of fire enforcement, which would detect and deter buses, professionalism, and negligence. Some firefighters focus on one of the special questions we have to raise, they use the flight and tactics for truck operation with brand news. Today, there are many of the demands on the firefighter demand developed and from many different C O Ts. Firefighting in addition, we recognize it's a very certain thing. Medical emergencies are here, we want us to get it right, we're going to definitely explain life and death. Still, the highly volatile or life-threatening hazards and areas tend to involve violence and a firefighter's life savings. Here before the high environments or large scale events, there's certainly uncertainty or create real terror. Inwardly, factors people, including employees, can cause paranoia and bores me constantly, like you. As a territory, if someone has a veteran's experience, considerable fire peristals, and has the years to consider that those injuries. Thank you, Ron. If you went inside. If, I would say, practical firefighting, check. Management of medical emergencies on a small and large scale, check. Risk assessment and unit supplier for commercial development, check. Department operations and leadership, check. Father, definitely, some personality, uh, and. A little about that, he did start his career in nineteen eighty-eight, inspired by the team he was born in. He became a paramedic at the time of the rank of deputy chief thirty days of eighteen years. Since the south, in sixty, Bruce, the therapist, started wanting to take the rank of deputy fire chief. So he, he, he was there for this team. Here in these years, apparently, that he came along and he gave a few fighting for them. Certainly, him, the role, uh, of fire investigator and plan reviewer. Indeed, I have never known anyone who knows more about international and state charges than that, that he is. Deputy firefighter was fortunate to have that come aboard full time in two thousand and nineteen. He continued to serve as fire investigator, inspector, plan reviewer, paramedic, driver operator, and most recently, a captain chief. No one observing our department has the combination of experience and current experience that that has, and is so qualified to serve in the role of deputy chief of this department. That character, I charge you with the duties of deputy fire chief and the role of overwatch of fire. Medical personnel with the management of department operations and the safety of all citizens of Chattahoochee. Mayor, council members, and senators, it is just a fact on personal fly that I promote Captain McCarry to the rank of deputy fire chief in the pity of Chattahoochee Fire Department. Yeah, I know.
Thank you so much, Greg, Pat. Congratulations. Uh, people hear me say this often enough, but people who have dealt with our public safety, particularly our fire folks, particularly Greg Brett, know how amazingly blessed we are as a city to have this group of people that we have here. Uh, and Pat is just a fundamental part of that as well. So, uh, we appreciate you guys all so much. Um, we are lucky to have this group here. Next item on the agenda is public comment, which is time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council and provide your input opinions on any matter not settled for a couple of hearing during next meeting. Yay. We, we're here tonight. So all we have forward and speaking of the microphone directly to the council. Can you, um, yeah, just. For me, oh, hang, hang on, sorry. First stating your name and record for the rec, your name and address for the record. You're allowed three minutes for your own personal remarks. Thank you. Sorry.
I'm here. The name Crawford, five, five, seven, five, Cochrane Mill Road. I just wanted to come up and thank everybody who, um, was in attendance to our meet and greet that we had on September the sixteenth for our candidates. Um, we do have an election coming up and we had a great turnout. We had some good information that was passed around and I really wanted to thank all the volunteers because it takes a village to actually, um, put on an event around this city. And of course, Ruby, Lori, Camille, y'all all know that. Um, also, I wanted to remind everybody that on Monday night, this upcoming Monday night, the October the ninth at six thirty, there's going to be another candidate forum here at City Hall and Tamara Schwartz is the host of that. It's an independent forum. Um, I met with her yesterday. We had some good collaboration and, um, information to share about what went well and what didn't go well for the forum that was on September the sixteenth. I also have a citizen that wanted to speak up again about the eighteen wheeler truck on Cochrane Mill Road. I did speak to Chief Degu before the meeting to see if there's any way he could speak with the chief of South Fulton, uh, city of South Fulton to see about that being such a dangerous hazard on our roads. I mean, the eighteen wheeler is parking in the right of way. Um, he's already knocked over a fire hydrant and, um, I know, um, Chief Brett is trying to work on that also. Um, my concern about, um, item twenty-three dash oh four four tonight by listening to everyone is I was under the impression that once you do a first read, you have to have a second read and a vote within sixty days. I could be wrong about that, but, um, maybe you can speak toward that, um, later this after, later during the meeting and clarify that and verify that for all the citizens that are here. I thought there was a sixty day, um, minimum in between first reads and a vote. But thank you for all your hard work and, um, thank you for my time.
Portia Cross. Greetings, Mayor, Council, city leaders and fellow residents. My name is Portia Cross. I live at two twenty Big Bear Court in Crossroads subdivision. I'm here to inform you about what I perceive as several issues with Crossroads and appeal to you for assistance. I purchased my home in August of twenty-two and in that short time, I've had neighbors change in my right, left, in front of me and behind me. And the pattern continues and that does not aid to stability or security. The welcome to Chattahoochee Hills sign on Wilkinson Mill Road was not there when I first moved here. Now, when I drive by, I go, hey, because I'm happy to be part of this community. I've heard many of you boast about how you love living here and the rich history. You all give me hope. But when I turn into my driveway, I'm highly discouraged. There is always trash at the entrance and exits every day. The city does a great job with cutting the grass and removing the trash and immediately the trash cycle starts again. There are homes in need of much repair. There are cars parked and piled everywhere and dogs roaming with no leash for owner. We don't have an H O A or a way to enforce city codes. This is not a ping on my neighbors. I appreciate my neighbors. This is saying we can and should do better. My taxes have gone up, but my home value has not. And if you say, Ms. Cross, why not get together in your subdivision and make change? I tell you, I don't have much hope in that. Ruby Foster, our council person is great and she has voiced ways to make change, but she cannot do it alone. I'm very hopeful that with all of you, all of us involved as a community team, we can work to be changed to Chattahoochee, to Crossroads so that can be more reflective of Chattahoochee Hills. I watched the video on Chattahoochee Hills and heard the founder of C M B say, if we work together, we can have better value. I cannot fandom Chattahoochee Hills continue to prosper while Crossroads remains at a crossroad. As I heard Rodney Peak say, we are examples of smart growth. Please consider how we as a community can ensure Crossroads is an example of smart growth and is on par with the rest of Chattahoochee Hills. And what we can do to start the process and have conversations. Thank you for listening and thank you for helping.
Thank you so much for coming.
Okay, hold on, love. I'm trying to listen.
Hi, I'm Tamara Schwartz. I live at three forty Halls to Drive and I came here to reiterate what Deneen was saying to you, which is, and also to introduce myself to you because I don't know if I know all of you and all the candidates who are here, but we are having a candidate, uh, forum on Monday, six thirty. So I just wanted to say hi. Uh, I'm organizing it. So if you have any questions or if you are a candidate and I don't know you yet, let me know, uh, anything I can do for you and looking forward to seeing everybody there. And oh, one other thing, if you live in a prominent location in Chat Hills and would like a sign in your yard that says, candidate forum on Monday, let me know because I would love to put it in your yard the way we're supposed to. Thank you.
Thank you. Daryl, I've been asked if we could turn the volume up just a little. Daryl, I've been asked if we could turn the volume up just a little bit on the comments. We're having a hard time hearing them up here.
Is it the fan?
I know you're gonna get feedback probably, right? Yep. Stop.
Just kidding. One zero six eight five Hutchinson Ferry Road. I love our city. City staff we have is great. Thank everybody that gives their time up here. I usually come up here with a positive comment. And I want, if I told you everything I liked about Chat Hills, we'd be up here past three minutes. Just at the park the other day and all the kids were there riding our bikes. Someone broke down in front of my house the other day, single lady. Right as dusk was coming, didn't even have to ask when the, one of the police officers right at the street. Came and blocked the lane as we're in the lane traffic, fixed their car. Kudos to the police station. I love our city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, just for the record, I didn't ask my, for my permission to get my picture taken, but I guess if Rodney does it, I'll be, go right ahead. But stop the clock. All right, so a couple of things. I got three minutes. I got three main points here just real quick. I'm the red ed that lives on the corner, Cockermill and Rivertown Road. I drive a big green tractor. I would have had a rural, uh, keep it rural sign in my yard, but all the school traffic, somebody ran it over. So had to throw that away. Deneen's got me another one to go. Um, one, just overall comment on the speed at which you're trying to. Now I'm going to use the word push through because I, what I just saw. Um, in the applications of this, uh, the process is appearing a little bit biased against the public. You're, you're running things a little too hot. And I, I encourage you to reconsider slowing things down. It's not going to hurt the proposals. Um, I don't think he's going away. I don't want him to go away. But think things through. I think it's ridiculous to. Look through and try to evaluate things on first reads when you don't even know if it's viable. I think that's ridiculous. Okay. Um, you know, I watched in your TBR process uh was voted on uh and through an opens records request. Uh, we saw councils lack of understanding, but you voted that in anyway. Okay, it was not well understood. You voted it in. It's a pattern. I want to see that stopped. Um, second point, please recognize that the upcoming Merrill Village may seem like a good thing. And again, I'm not personally getting in any way. But we should be very cautious and recognize that this one vote can triple our population. One. Thing like this triples, if not quadruples, our population over, over a time period, yes, but. That's two thousand units. You don't have that anywhere. That's not keep it rural and and we have to really think it through what it's going to look like. So caution. Um. Basic tools in your backpack or purse are being questioned by your own city council from both sides. Okay, and I don't know if that's just a political thing or not, that it's from both sides, but it is from both sides. Uh, the one to twenty ratio, minimum distance between hamlets and villages and seriously, five hundred feet difference between hamlets, really? I mean, I love Serenby, but I wouldn't want another Serenby right next to it, five hundred feet away. Thank you. Um. TDRs, I don't know if anybody you know Quigley Down Under, but that's an experimental gun with experimental ammunition. You don't know what you're doing there. You don't have it lined out and it, and he needs it to support his project. So you need to get that right. Um, lastly, you need to, need to listen to your own zoning commission and when they make recommendations, heed them. They're supposed to tell you what to vote for. Okay? So you gotta get that right. Uh, quote. Closer, little, little late for third reads endorsement of keep it rural philosophies. And just it's. Slow it down.
Thank you.
Nancy Richardson.
Hi, my name is Nancy Richardson. I live at nine four two five Hutchinson Ferry Road. I would just like to encourage all the citizens to come out and vote at the election, especially if you are not happy with the rate and the speed at which they are. As Scott said, pushing things through. We saw tonight that there were even council members that questioned it. But went ahead and, and agreed to keep it as a first read. So just everybody, if you're not happy with the, the speed, please get out and vote and make your voice heard.
All right, thanks, everybody. Uh, next up is one item of unfinished business, which is twenty-three dash oh three oh. Which was the Charter Amendment uh around uh Commission Service. Uh, me. Uh, there's not really much need to describe that further other than to say that what we had talked about and what this document says. Is that it has to be people that live in the community, right?
Correct.
Are we picking one of? But.
It's a first read again because.
Oh, because we changed it too much. Got it. That's right.
Um, but it um. Uh, allows people to serve out their term if they move out of the city. But then, which is, is one year terms.
After this year, Sarah.
All right, so again, no action today, uh, but. It is because we had talked about maybe having to make a call on it in the, in the motion. We don't have to on this one. Next, there are several items of new business. Uh, first three are just first reads. Again, no action. We're just going to have a presentation. Um, first is twenty-three dash oh four four, which is a map. Change in zoning, rezoning for five hundred and twenty-six acres from rural to village uh on Cockermill Road. Mike, you want to talk just about that? Sorry, you can do whatever you need to do. Oh, staff reports. I'm sorry. I'm moving right along.
Staff, you're okay, right? Everything's good. You got money in the bank. We're good.
Uh, yes, staff reports. Well, we'll take an interlude here to do the staff reports. You're actually the next thing. I turned a page and went right past it. Uh, first up, we'll have a financial update from the city manager. It's gonna happen.
You pay.
Deputy Mayor, Council, Staff, uh, citizens and guests here today. Appreciate all you've been here in October third meeting. Um. But Councilman Smith's right. We got money in the bank. We're good. Um, from a budget standpoint. Uh, when, when you miss the staff, I was telling Daryl, I said, we missed staff, but I'm okay with that, the reports, because y'all have a busy, busy agenda, so I'll, I'll be brief with the financials. Um, we are twenty-two point seven percent, let's just say twenty-three percent for the fiscal year at the time of this report. That, this was done uh last month, right before the work session. So, uh. We're, we got about, you look down or look, you see the revenues, a lot of that is your fund balance, but we have about five point seven percent of our revenues collected. And I say that, it's like, oh, that's not that much, five point seven percent. Well, you know, again, we're not in the point where we're collecting a lot of revenues that they don't come in this time of year, which is. Why we rely on our fund balance to get us to that point. So I always write that number down because in my head, I want to know what that is. Um, so where we're at in the other financing sources and hotel motel taxes, we're about twenty percent. And fund balance is there, uh, but that'll be a interfund transfer once our audit is completed, so that'll be taken care of. T-SPOS coming as usual, but just to touch on that, we'll talk about T-SPOS later because we got it, that's on the agenda, so. That T-SPOS money is, is going to go away, but it's going to go to the roads. Um, going down into the expenditures, you know, just monthly normal expenditures in each department budget. You know, obviously, department also, they have different things in there with salaries, benefits and professional services and. Um, supplies, those kind of things all come in a departmental budget, so we're all on track there. So overall, just to be brief. We've got uh about twelve percent of our total expenditures, let's call it thirteen, and but our revenues are, are. Are, are up, uh, seventy-three, seventy-three percent if you include all our, our fund balance, so. But yeah, like was said earlier, we, we have money to bank and we're doing, we're doing well. It, I'm glad to answer any question you might have on the financials or any other questions and um. Also apologize for the internet. I don't know what happened, but we tried some hotspots. It worked out well and. Uh, that was happening. I hate that I missed uh Chief Deputy Chief McCarrigan getting promoted on, on Zoom, so. I know that, I know that chips here are taking some pictures, so I'd like to get some of those pictures if I could chip because that's, congratulations to Deputy Chief Carrigan, Carrigan.
Hi, Rob.
Yes, sir.
Can you answer this? You know, it is an election year and people are asking questions.
Yes.
Under the mayor and council. You see those figures? That ain't what we get paid. So could you explain to people what those dollars are there?
Yeah, absolutely. These are the overall budget for, some, some departments are department of one. Um, you guys are a department of more than one, not just six, the mayor and, and five council members, but you also have. Gentleman over here, the attorneys, we pay the attorneys, uh, we have community outreach that comes out of there. We have a, a grant that we give to Bear Creek Nature Center. The, the, those kind of things come out of there, professional development, conferences, training, those kinds of things when the council goes to conference and training and. Uh, economic development things, memberships, memberships, Georgia Municipal Association or.
Well, moving forward, can, can that just all be its own? You know, mayor and council, that's going to be mayor and council pay. That should just be mayor and council pay. That's what's confusing people.
Yeah, it's, well, it's in that, it's a line. I can share that. That's a line of, this is overall picture, but that's a line item in there.
Break that out. Let's break it out.
Yeah, that way I don't have to answer that question. I don't get a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars.
Yes, the council does not get paid. The bulk of that is, does not go to the council. You're correct.
So I mean, and I see why people would have that if they look at the budget.
Yeah, that's an easy thing to think.
And to an explanation on the um seven percent for the hotel thing we talked about last month. Is that seven percent of a hundred percent of what we collect? The seven percent of the eight percent.
Oh, but, well, we don't have the eight percent yet. The seven percent.
It's just when, when that happens.
When it happens.
My understanding was it was seven percent of a hundred percent of what we collect. Is that wrong?
No, that's not. No, it's the seven percent is one hundred percent. So seven percent, if you go to say in hotel, we use round numbers and it costs you a hundred dollars. You're gonna pay a hundred and seven dollars to stay in hotel. We get that seven dollars and then we have to split it up according to the rules of the law, so. That, that's seven percent is one hundred percent. We get, let's, let's say the city gets three point five percent and another um one point five goes to the CBB and another one point five goes to the DMO, Destiny Marketing Organization. So that seven percent gets split up amongst those entities, but seven percent is a hundred.
Sitting down and talk to you. That's actually something I need.
It is confusing.
It's not confusing. I said, we just need to sit down and ABC if that way.
Yeah, happy to do it. Happy to do it. Yes, sir.
Cool. Thank you.
One other point, just to, to clarify too, and, and apologies in advance to folks because we're getting ready to start a bunch paving. And that's always kind of a pain in the butt when they're, you know, blocking lanes and doing the paving. That's about to start, but we're also about to have roads that are in better shape than they've been for quite a while. Part of that is us saving up fund balance. So right now that works well for us because in this time before property taxes come in. We've got fund balance money that we can make payroll with and all of that. But you'll see that shift pretty quickly as we start spending the T-SPOS money and some of that money we've been saving up. To do this larger paving job this year, get better prices when you do more. And so we've saved up for a couple of years to do a bigger chunk this year. Uh, it, it'll just all shift fairly quickly. Um, anything else? If not, next up is a fire department report from Chief Brett.
Pretty straightforward, Mayor. You know, it's all the uh numbers for most of September there. Um, a lighter month, but uh some of the incidents that we did deal with were not, I would not say they were light. Um, I, I just want to point out, I, as the one single thing to really comment on i- is, is the community service. We had a call today about um our fire department guys serving as a judge. Or as judges at a Boy Scout contest, uh, cooking contest. And so, I mean, you know. It's, it's great to get those invitations. It's great to have little birthday parties that, that, that we're open to, to have in the station and so forth. We, we want to be that sort of engaged department. And I hope people feel that when that bad, bad moment is occurring, that there's. That there's good attention, good care provided. But in the other hours too, that is, is, you know, the rapport we have with our, our citizens is just as important, if, if not more in a different way. That's what I have. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer. Thank you for obliging us on the promotion for Deputy Chief McCarrigan. Very deserving man.
And thank you for being one of the best things about the city, Greg.
Can I give you a personal thank you? It's just a personal privilege. Thank you for the support over the last thirty days in the passing of my parents. That's been a difficult trial for me. But thank you for every, every, to everyone in the room who's aware. Thank you.
Uh, next up is a police department report from Chief Degoo.
Good evening, Council, Mayors, Citizens. Uh, you have the numbers for. The month this, September, uh, just like the fire department, the slower month than normal, we're still averaging around five and a half, between five and a half, six calls per person per, per shift. Um, a couple of things I wanted to, to mention. Um, first of all, our Detective Stein started. He's working, um, he's the uh, the guy stole from the DA's office. So, um, but he's working very well and in fact, he's already working on um a case in Serenby. That we had some break-ins and I wanted to mention that. Um, please tell your constituents that I. Chattahoochee Hills, we're a small knit community, we're a safe community, but don't make yourself a target. A lot of the break-ins happened because people left their doors open unlocked. Um, the stuff that was stolen, they didn't break into anything. They left them unlocked and so they just opened it up and took them. So please lock your doors. You know, um, I, I love that we have a safe community. I do, but don't make yourself a target, please. Um, I mentioned before, we, we do have two openings, the one that we, the new position that we got in July and then when Officer Dorsett left. I have six people in background right now for those two positions, so I'm confident that we will fill that. And then lastly, I wanted to talk real quick about the barbecue uh that we're having on the fourteenth. Um, so we decided to change things a little bit since nobody wanted to go up against me, which I get. I understand, you know, it's intimidating. I got it. So what we're gonna do is my, my barbecue team is gonna come out and we're gonna, we're gonna make some barbecue. Um, and we'll, we'll cook. We will be here about two o'clock setting up, so if you want to come and ask some questions, uh, one of my guys is. A, he's actually nationally brisket champion, so if you wanted, talk to him about how to make a good brisket. I'm, I'm bragging, but I'm not bragging. I'm, I'm serious. He. Yeah, he's, he is, he can do some things with a brisket that'll make you cry. So, but uh, anyway, uh, if you want to come out and, and talk before, before we have, and then we'll cer, we'll start serving around four thirty-ish. But once we run out, we're out. So get there early. So. All right. Any, any questions, thoughts, comments, anything? Okay.
Thank you.
Next up is a report from our Public Works Director, Daryl Lindland.
Wow. Hey, sing that, guy. I'm trying to trip you, dude.
Hello.
We, we count on you, Daryl.
Hey, good. Count on me.
We do.
You can count on me. Uh, you don't may sing it today. Good evening, Mayor, Council and, and beautiful residents Chattahoochee Hills. Um, I want really quick, talk about the grading crew. Uh, you know, we have a lot of questions about grading and gravel roads. You know, we have thirty-eight miles of gravel roads. Our grading crew have one grading crew. They continuously work year round. We don't have like, we do it once, we scrape this road. And then we come back, scrape this road two times a year. So we continuously, when we finish one road, we go. Through the whole process to the city. Uh, when they get through the cycle, what we do is we go, we determine which road needs it more than the other road. Because some roads, uh, like Hamilton, that have a driveway that pours a lot of water across that same, every so, there's a lot of tension has to be there. So sometimes we have to stop what we're doing to go fix minor stuff. And also the grading crew, when trees go down in the city, that's who I stop. To go stop grading to do the projects that which, which a lot of projects happen in our city. I'm sure Mayor, uh, the residents don't realize how many projects go on every day in the city. The development that we're responsible for to making sure that you as a mayor and council put forward policies and procedures and standards. So it's our job to make sure the, the builders, developers are meeting exactly what we allow. So feel confident knowing that we have staff out there every day. Even in Serenby, I know some people don't realize our relationship with Serenby. Serenby still has to fall under the same policies and procedures you put forward. And which they have done a great job. We worked hard building teams and communication. The roads are built, better built. Uh, the utility people that are coming, they're meeting the standards, they're doing better, which what it does is makes it all better. As the city, and even outside of Serenby, when you got these subdivisions going on, Raj is doing the way he does, they still have to meet the same standards. Everybody has to meet the same standard, same guidelines. And we work hard, uh, Mike and I, uh, making sure roads controls taken care of. It's a lot that we do with a small staff. Also, uh, to talk about projects, if you notice, we uh finally get the power done. Also, uh, to talk about projects, if you notice, we uh finally get the power done. Back here for the town green, for the event, uh Greystone come in this week and they set the meter. Early part of the week, so they, there is power back there. Of course, they don't do the quality work that we do. So of course, my staff, we go out there, we rake it all back up. Clean it back up. If you go there, you can, only reason you know they're there is because they're dirt there. It's it's a, they're gonna come put some seed and straw on this week. Also, at the library, the the fans and stuff that that we talked about months back. Um, we had a contractor lined up to do it and I guess the contractor went under, switched start over. And that's just what happens when it comes to the policies and stuff we do. So that's complete as well. So many things are being done, lots of things are being done in the city and feel confident knowing we work tirelessly. As a unit, all of us together to make sure you get what you what you deserve and what you ask us to do. Any questions for me before I skip to my eighties music back? No, thank you. Thank you, guys.
Nobody ever wants to follow you. That's the problem. Mike, sorry, we have a report from the community developer. Actually be fair to move you up one slot.
All right, um, you have the numbers again, of course, uh, uh, building. And activity, uh, uh, at this month versus sixteen a year ago. Um, five total new homes, which is the same for um, uh, principal homes. There was all actually also an accessory to. Dwelling September a year ago. In addition, um, COs and inspections are down in the um. Overlook we've had, uh, uh, through the the. It's coming, not this coming Thursday, a week from Thursday, October twelfth, six thirty PM. Uh, we have two public hearings that'll be on that agenda there. They have to take place. Um, and then I think we're gonna have a preliminary platform, states that see to grow. I have it in hand, um, a couple of things that. Uh, um, need to be taken care of with it and um. Don't know for sure yet if that's gonna cause it to be put off or um or if we'll go ahead and uh, I have a decision on that. Um, I just also wanted to, I was looking through the um, the zoning ordinance here quickly. Um, after the discussion of the first read and the zoning ordinance requires us to put a a rezoning on the agenda for the first available meeting. After we receive a complete application. So that's what the zoning ordinance asks for. Now, I don't know, says put on the agenda. I don't know what. Implication that has for you to accept that on the agenda, but that's um, that's how the uh, the the ordinance reads.
Thanks, Mike. Anybody have anything for Mike? If not.
Yeah, I didn't really understand what you said because you you spoke a little fast. So the zone zoning ordinance says after the what? We have to put it on the agenda. I didn't hear that.
Once we have a complete application.
Okay.
Yeah, so when the application has been rece- a complete application has been received by the city. So all the required parts of the application and the fee, in this case, we have the DRI process, which had to proceed um to a certain point. Um, consider that a part of the application in this, when a DRI is a part of it. Um, the intent, um, declared intent. Uh, by the, I guess it's written in state law, anyway, as expressed by the folks at ARC. Is that the DRI process is not supposed to slow down the zoning decisions. We know that it does, but the intent is to minimize that to the degree possible.
So what you're saying is our ordinance says that once you have a complete application, then it's your responsibility to to let us know about.
To, that's right, to put it, put it on the first available agenda.
First available agenda. So so you're trying to convince me after months and months and months of work. That I guess now we've just now gotten this final thing. I I think what we're talking about here is is the simple knowing of what's going on, maybe the heads up other than, hey, you know, somebody's thinking about doing this. That's what we hear six months later. You're in our book on Thursday and let's do a first read on Tuesday. And I and I get it. I know some of the developers, they do, uh, they reach out. They like to, you know, meet with you individually, two at a time or something. Sometimes I can make that, sometimes I don't. Uh, the reason why is just like we're meeting here, we meet twice a month. Why can't somebody who wants to come down here and do something in our city stand where you're standing, point at the screen and introduce himself to the whole town? Because I know before we get to this part of this process, there's months of work involved in this. And I think that's what we all know. So what, when does all this start? Once the complete application is done? Is that when we do the drawings or or when does? I mean, I want to truly understand your process because I know the city has known about this for a long time. You're telling me you've got that application. And as of, I guess, last week, that's that's when it's time to tell us.
But what would constitute a complete application? That's the same question I have.
Right.
Yeah, when you.
That starts the clock. Thirty days later, we have to have it on the agenda.
Right, right, within the, right, that's right, the first first available.
So are there a list of items that you have to check off?
Includes a list of required um elements. Right, right. So yes, um, we get, um, there's a required pre-application meeting. Um, and so that can happen sometimes way ahead of, sometimes it can happen as it's being dropped, where they can drop off the application. At the meeting or right after the meeting. Um, in this case, as you know, um, you all heard about this in January of this year. Had an opportunity to um learn about it, had another opportunity to learn about it in August, um, when the applicant uh invited you out. So this is not a surprise, I know to council. I can understand why maybe uh citizens may be surprised, although I have mentioned. At at least the last two city council meetings in my um, in my uh, uh, report, staff report. Um, that I have the application in for the the corner, a village proposal at the corner of Cochran Mill Road and. Um, South Fulton Parkway. So the fact of the application is not new to anyone. Um, the specifics, right, the maps, that sort of stuff, that certainly could be new. Now, the first read is only a, hey, we're here, right? That's just to let everyone know, the process has started. Pay attention, right? Now you know there's a planning commission hearing coming up. City Council, Planning Commission has the option of uh putting it off for future uh meetings. City Council has the option of putting it off at future meetings, but the purpose of the first read is really to give that public notice that, hey, we're starting that process, right?
What I'm saying, Mike, that public notice thing work. I get the notice. When I'm here at the meetings, I get, I get the book. They drive it to my driveway. Whatever we're doing. These people don't know half of it. And granted, part of it's their responsibility and they need to get here. Uh, what they have seen in the last four or five months is thi- this is Chattahoochee Hills, big. This is thirty three hundred people. This looks like an Atlanta phone book I get every month. That's that's what they're concerned about. And um, we need to make sure they understand what's going on. It's not my job calling every week. Whatever we're doing is not working. So, um, but either way, we'll move on. That's that's something else. I would just wanted to. I'm sorry, Lori. I know that was your question. I'm trying to figure out when is that? When you know, when do we get to know? Because nobody in this room believes those maps were printed last week.
Right, and 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 Dana.
I'm not sure if it's nobody.
Put this again on the agenda for the next work session, so we can talk through all this stuff in the work session. Where, you know, that's that's what we do. We talk through those sort of, those sort of things, right? Mike, thanks very much for your report.
Thanks, Mike. Sorry.
That's all right.
Wouldn't beat you up, Mike.
Uh, so, uh, again, we, I I took the unfinished business out of order. I appreciate staff very much reminding me that I skipped the whole page. As I was running them, next time, please throw something at me sooner so that I stop sooner. Uh, but the next item is twenty three dash oh four four, which is a first read on the very village zoning, we're just stopping on. Hang on, we can't hear you at all right now.
Hello, hello. So, uh, yes, this is a, this item is a request from Harrison Merrill of WHM Chattahoochee Hills Investments LLC. To rezone five hundred and twenty six acres at the corner of Cochran Mill Road and South Fulton Parkway from RL World to VL Village. Um, uh, the site is in the future development maps preferred village area entirely contained with that in that area. Um, so it is um, uh, uh, the right place for that according to the comprehensive plan. Um, the site has about a mile of frontage um on each side of Cochran Mill Road and on each side of um South Fulton Parkway. And uh somewhat under a thousand feet of frontage on Wickerson Mill, north side of Wickerson Mill, near the corner with Cochran Mill. And about two thousand feet on um, uh, Rico Tatum Road. Um, uh, immediately to the north is Cochran Mill Park. Immediately to the east is uh Wickerson Mill Gardens and the Bear Creek uh mixed use hamlet. Um, which was approved and is about to get their LDC. They have not started construction there yet. Um, the where the where the two um districts um would border where this approved is um part of the open space of uh of. Of the uh, the Bear Creek development. So that's not not part of where they're develop- development is, is part of the uh, uh, part of the open space. Immediately to the south is the city of Palmetto, um, with property that is owned by the applicant. So about thirteen hundred, more than thirteen hundred acres of um. Uh, uh, Merrill Park, um, which was the subject of a DRI also um in the city of Palmetto. And that's of course, um, controlled by the city of Palmetto and the developer, not um, not us. Uh, the proposal is to protect fifty six percent of the property as open space. The zoning requirement is ten percent. Um, much of that is uh the required buffers, um, which are a hundred and fifty heat on um. Uh, on the borders with the RL District and along the road, along the scenic byway there, and then three hundred feet on um South Fulton Parkway. Um, as uh the people sitting up here know, um, the applicant's original plan. Um, was to propose a um, a a village that um interacted with with Cochran Mill Road. And uh did not have those buffers. Um, it was a product of some of those early meetings. Where the the applicant heard that um that was not something that council members are happy with. And in fact, only very recently, um, provided the map that shows the buffers, um, along with the withdrawal of the um, of the very, of the variance. It was proposed there. Um, they're proposing two thousand residential units. Um, so with the um, five hundred and twenty six acres, five hundred and twenty six residential. Um, units that would come along with that, they would need to purchase um one thousand four hundred and seventy four TDRs in order to um develop as proposed. Um, the property is also uh the location of a um long proposed uh multi-use trail. That goes from uh Cochran Mill Park on the east side, under the parkway, the culvert is already there, twelve foot tall box culvert under the parkway. Um, and then down the connection to um, uh, through Palmetto down to uh to Phillips Road. And there is um some funding for that in the the regional uh tip, Transportation Improvement Plan. Um, uh, as we indicated, um, it's undergoing DRI review. We won't get all the reports back until um, until next week. Um, but we have um, the the draft um, uh, mirrors a lot of what the traffic study um had proposed. Um, and this uh proposal will have a hearing in the planning commission, as I already indicated, on the twelfth, that's six thirty PM on the twelfth. And um, happy to take any questions.
Yeah, I got several.
On the TDRs? Um. Have we decided the price yet? I I don't, I wasn't in that conversation.
There was a TDR value, a DTC, I'm sorry, which is one of the TDR version, right? TDRs, open market, they can be whatever, right? Sort of saying for the benefit of the public, there are various versions. Um, but for the DTC, which is what an applicant would pay the city. For the city to then go and spend the money on on uh preserving property, a value was adopted with the budget. It's in the neighborhood of nineteen thousand dollars. I don't remember the exact number. It's uh something with some, some change. There is also a perpetual fee option, um, which I believe um this applicant is probably um inclined toward. Um, we could talk about that, but it's, it would be a a fee paid by the buyer on every sale of of property. Again, talk further about that if you'd like.
And that's a part of the development that has to be in place before.
Correct, that's right, that's right. The zoning requires a developer to sign a development agreement with the city. Every time they proposed uh density is higher than the one unit per acre allowed.
Were you done with your, your TDR question, Richie?
Yeah, I'm good.
Um, so I have a question about, uh, a couple of questions about the traffic study, which I guess is gonna. Be revised yet, but on areas where. The road ownership seems to be split, maybe on Rico Tatum Road. I'm not clear from the map if Chattahoochee Hills owns both sides. And I sent this question to you and you sent me some kind of answer, which I've lost, but that may have to do with the Palmetto side. So when there's a development in Chattahoochee Hills has one side of the road, um, as its property. Uh, and maybe Palmetto has the other side. The residents wants, wants to know. Uh, if if it's already gravel road, will it remain gravel road? And how do you tell who owns the road and makes that decision?
So the city's po- policy is not to pave any of the gravel roads. Um, in the case of Rico Tatum specifically, actually, the applicant's property is on both sides. Um, it's, I don't remember how many feet, I think fifty feet on the south side, something like that. They actually, when they annex their property into. Uh, Palmetto, just before we became a city, left um, uh, Chat Hills property on both, on both sides of uh of that. Or the the parcel was was on both sides. In any case, it's Chat Hills on both sides of Rico Tatum. Um, my understanding, and I I would have to refer to a map anywhere that Palmetto is on both sides of the road. I think that road is Palmetto. If we are on one side of the road, I believe it's all Chat Hills, because my understanding is Palmetto did not. Palmetto took as little bit of the road as they could when they took it, and that all happened before we were a city, so we got what was left.
And that is correct.
Okay. And then I I did have a question. I think you answered in and Richie's TDR question. Um, so we don't have our, we're really not ready to activate our TDR program if you wanted to buy TDRs. From the city tomorrow, and we couldn't, we don't have a TDR bank. So how does that work?
So which version, so the 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 three versions of the TDR program, the TDR open market program, that could, that could.
You wanted to buy the DTC.
So if you wanted to buy DTCs from the city, yeah, we could.
Do we swing that somehow?
Yeah.
Yeah, we could. So we don't have to have a bank of TDRs. We can collect the money and then.
In Lula. Kind, okay. And at, do I remember that at some point early on in the development? As soon as the shovel stuck in the ground, that you start paying for TDRs at that point?
Every, every sale.
Every sale.
So if it's a perpetual fee, every sale, if it's not, you prorate the number of TDRs. And so each, each lot or each dwelling um would pay their prorated amount of a of a DTC. So from the first one, say it's uh, they're roughly quadrupling, not exactly, but roughly quadrupling the number of units that they would do. So each unit would pay three quarters roughly of a of a DTC if they were going that route.
And sorry to ask, I'll I'll ask one more question and then let other people have a turn. Again, with the traffic study, because we don't know yet. Um, so it's not, Cochran Mill Road is not a state road, is ours, or at least ours in the city. And uh. Yeah, I don't know what they're gonna decide. I thought it would be traffic circles at the parkway. We'll wait to see what the final thing comes back. But as far as the traffic on Cochran Mill Road, if. If improvements are uh recommended, then is it sort of prorated with the development? Where they would pay a portion, sort of like the movie studio did? Is that how that works?
The movie studio is the perfect example, because in the movie studio's conditions of zoning, we picked that stuff up and they paid a prorate a share based on. Their percentage of the impact, right? And the the final version of the report that we're likely to get will say that same sort of thing. And and we probably adopt those in kind.
So, you know, I'm just putting my concern out there early. I I I mean, my biggest concern, everything else looks like it passes our zoning. Checked all the boxes, but my biggest concern is Cochran Mill Road, even if they're paying a percentage of the road. If it has to be improved eventually, w- we weren't really equipped to improve, you know, the two lane.
That percentage could be a hundred percent.
Okay, got you. So just hold off and wait. Okay, got you.
Mike, just to, uh, go ahead, go ahead.
Well, no, I was just, you go ahead, Troy. I've I've got a couple of comments to make, but.
Sure, ju- just a point of interest. I mean, I heard something that you said, and and I know this is, doesn't have anything to do with this with the city. Because this happened before we were a city. But you said that where Palmetto is involved or where the uh, their part of the development comes in. And then actually, and it's that big finger that comes up into us, really.
Right, right.
Uh, we still own a hundred percent of the road or on, that are on both sides of that. I mean, we're gonna be maintaining the roads. Okay, okay, Daryl shaking his hand, no. Okay. Right, that's not ours. Okay, so it's the way it's divided is that, okay. All right, as long as it went, the roads went with it, so that they're at least gonna be maintaining their roads. I didn't want to think that we were, and I have a problem with uh picking up the cost of maintaining it. I got you.
And and again, that stuff you would expect to see as conditions of zoning. There was the answers to that.
Right, that right. So it's. So the proposal is they their roads are encapsled in their seat. Okay. So the proposal is, they, their roads are encapsulated in their seat, okay. All right.
I think when we, we paid, remember, Palmetto didn't wanna join us, so their part didn't get paid, yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
Other questions?
No, I mean.
Go ahead.
Yeah. I got some, there we go, um. My, I was thinking through the, the path, the, the connectivity, and I know maybe a condition as it gets to planning to sort of look at is. How it's connecting through Palmetto, the Palmetto property potentially, Mr. Merrill. Across through our property to get to the, to the park, um, just to keep that in mind, I'd like to make sure we.
Mm-hmm.
Consider that.
Right.
Already been considered, but I, I, I'm not sure I see it clearly here, but as we go.
Uh, sure, sure, yeah, yeah, we can, we can address that somewhat, there, there's, there are site plans for. In both cities do show a network of paths.
And then also, Mike, we had talked about um, on the. The Cochrane Mill Park side of South Fulton Parkway. If it's possible for the roads to line up with your topography, because right now some of them don't. And you said that, you know, if the topography works, of course, that would make more sense, but we'll take a look at that, too.
There's, there's.
Go ahead.
No, no, you go.
No, I was just gonna say, if the applicant could say something about the project.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, they will line up, uh, if they can be lined up, and should be lined up.
That was it, and ditto with the trails, once you know the um, the trail network, you've got some of them lining up into the park.
Exactly, yeah, what, what we can do until we uh, get a decision from. Chat Hills is where to make that connection point, and I think I addressed that in the letter I sent to you uh, today. Your responses.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I just wanted to, and, and Harrison, I, I don't, unless there's something else you'd like to say. You're welcome to stand there, I just don't feel like you need to stand there if you don't want to. Uh, I, I had noticed on Facebook and, and responded to a post on Facebook about. A, a question that somebody had raised about the uh, comp plan. Because the comp plan has a chart in it, that says right in the chart, that it's a compilation of all of the studies that the Atlanta Regional Commission could find. That related to roads, uh, that they put into the comp plan, like, you know, what the plans G dot had, and were for a bunch of different roads. Uh, and that was whatever the latest ones they could find, and you know, that was background information basically for the council. One of the things that it said in there on one of the intersections, and I think in particular the one about Cochrane Mill. Is that it was a tight diamond intersection. And that may have been their plan at one point, but I know that in every conversation that I've been involved in with G dot for the last. Ten years or more, they've talked about roundabouts on the parkway. Uh, and they were actually in a call, uh, I was on a call that they were talking about this when they were talking about the movie studio. And they were confirming again that they, they were doing roundabouts on the barkways, they're talking about which percentages they were. And I just want people to understand that when there's something in the comp plan that comes from. For example, G dot or, or some other report that somebody's done. And it's a road that G dot owns and it's not ours. If they've changed their mind about what their plan is or whatever, we don't have a whole lot to say about that. Uh, again, uh, just to, to clear up where there might be any confusion there. You know, what I'm understanding from G dot, what they keep saying was, is, and what we're hearing in every one of these conversations. Is they're expecting to do roundabouts on the parkway in Chat Hills. Um, good news about those is they slow traffic down and trucks don't like them, so it decreases the amount of through truck traffic you have. Uh, so it's, it's probably a good thing for us that that's their plan. Uh, but again, uh, they were not, we've not had them on a call yet about this D R I, so we're not. We haven't even had the opportunity to ask them that question to confirm that period. Uh, so just wanted to clarify that for folks, uh, the other thing too, and this is just a general comment, um. The villages on the parkway have been in the plan. Uh, since before we became a city, they've been something that's freaking, been reconfirmed in every comp plan update, so it's not a surprise that this is. Being applied for here, uh, there's already one zoned further up the parkway. And you know, if, if anything, that's an indication of the fact that zoning doesn't necessarily always mean action, because that one's been zoned for almost twenty years and hasn't started. Uh, and the other thing that people need to keep in mind is that any of these processes. You know, somebody applies for four hundred or something, or a thousand something, or whatever. You know, that's twenty years before those things actually exist, and so the opportunity to get ahead of infrastructure and all of that. Is kind of part and parcel of that conversation, and it's why we have the conversations about. Conditions of zoning, right, so that we know, when the actual requirement for something exists, we know who's paying for what, right? And just, again, just a background.
Tom, a question on that, so when, when um, the council votes to approve. A, a, a development application that may not build out for decades. Um, it's entitled as a village, does that entitlement carry out through the twenty years, or does it change if the zoning changes in the future?
Uh, it, it carries out unless the deal was something different, you know, that's, that's the. You know, the, the one, for example, that got zoned before we became a city was zoned by someone else, we don't have the right to change their zoning. That's why we've had the issue with some of the.
Fulton County.
They have zoning rights already, and you know, you have to kind of negotiate around the rights they already have, if you wanna change something.
Okay, thanks.
Again, that's state law, so that's not something we're doing anyway, that's just state law.
So I just wanna say too, sorry for all the questions, but it's our first village. And we don't really mean to put the applicant through the wringer, but it's our first village, so we're. Um, all very interested about this.
And the process will take as much time as it needs. That is how we do things. Uh, any other questions or comments before we move on? All right, uh, next up is twenty-three dash oh four five, uh, which is a rezoning uh, for a hamlet. Uh, on Cochrane Mill Road further north, uh, also a first rate only no action, uh, Mike. Mike, why don't you talk to, just roll into the, the hotel, the next item as well, because it's in the same.
Great, well, yeah, we'll, we'll kind of talk about these two together, there's um, not a whole lot to say about the hotel, but I'll, I'll put it in the conversation. Um, so this is an application, actually two applications for um, one for rezoning of two hundred and sixty-five acres from RL Rural to. H M M U mixed use hamlet, and a special use permit request uh, to allow a hotel in the mixed use hamlet. Um, uh, the application is for land um, west of Cochrane Mill Road, east of Creole Road, and south of Cedar Grove Road. Has frontages on all three of those, um, as I say, two hundred and sixty-five acres, the um. Uh, uh, proposal is for um, uh, around six hundred units. Um, which would mean that they would ha- also have to use the T D R program. Uh, which is um, one of the uh, uh, great uh, problems we've been hoping to solve here in the city is the uh, funding of that T D R program, so. Um, that is a um, uh, that's, that's a, a plus for this one. Um, it has the hundred and fifty foot buffers all the way around the outside, along Cedar Grove, I'm sorry, along Cochrane Mill Road. Um, they're actually a little farther back than the hundred and fifty feet, because they have a stream that runs along the road there. And it pushes the uh, the development farther back, but most of the um, intensity is there on that side of the property. There's a large swath of open space on the west side, the Creole roadside of the property, um, and uh. The proposal um, includes a, a hotel, a one hundred room, um, one hundred key boutique hotel. Which is um, nestled kind of in the middle of the project toward the north side, but it's um, it's surrounded by either um. The uh, other residential development or open space, it's not, not way over on uh, on one edge. And then it includes uh, about fourteen thousand square feet of retail, um, also, which again is in the um, the, the core, which is uh. Uh, close to the main entrance on the Cochrane Mill side of the, of the project. Um, again, we have a planning commission hearing coming up nine days from tonight, Thursday, the twelfth, that's at six thirty P M. Any questions on this?
One of the, a couple of points here too, just again, just informational points for folks to, to keep in mind. Uh, one is that this is primarily uh, biased toward Cochrane Mill Road. In a section of Cochrane Mill Road that's actually in the city of South Fulton. Because of the way our zoning reads, uh, the buffer requirements aren't really the same if they're not buffering inside of the city, but the developer has. Gone ahead and kept our buffering requirements also toward the city of South Fulton. You know, buffers to, to help buffer the city of South Fulton. Uh, the other thing is the um, special use permits, I, again, just have seen some conversation about this. Special use permits are nothing like variances, variances are a place where you're allowing relief from the zoning. Uh, because there's some condition that makes it hard to actually meet the zoning, and if you can still meet the intent without. Uh, meeting that condition, you might be able to get a variance. Special use permits are for things that are allowed in a district, but that might require more uh, conditions, for example. Uh, depending on where they might be, hotels have been allowed in hamlets and villages again, since before the city existed. Uh, they have been reconfirmed in several complaint and zoning updates. It's not a question of whether hotels are allowed in these districts, it's that oftentimes. You need to make special requirements for public safety needs or, or things like that, and this is an opportunity. Where the council will spend more time on that, and make sure that all of those things are covered. Uh, the conversation around the Serenby Hotel, for example, has been a lot of work with Daryl and Greg. Making sure that all the access works and context of the plan and all that kind of stuff, so a- again, I just wanna make sure that people are looking at that the right way. Um, any other?
Um, now I just wanted to comment that a, a couple of the residents I talked to early on about this really appreciated. The applicant reaching out to them and meeting with them, and um. Almost seemed a little bit excited about this program, because it seems to check all of our boxes. I was hoping that um, the applicant would bring the little concept image she showed us, is it back there? Uh, it's uh, really cool, and, and when I, I met with her yesterday, I had just gotten back from a vacation up north. And drove through a little village that looked almost just like that. And it's really kind of the idea I think many of us have in our minds when we think of a, a, a little village or a small town, what that could look like. So I just wanted to let you know that those residents really appreciated your effort.
All right, that is it for that. Uh, Lauren, I will offer the opportunity, no, no pressure, yeah, all right, good deal. Next up is twenty-three dash oh four seven, which is a resolution for an application for funding from the Georgia D N R on a. Uh, universal trail for Riverlands Park. And I am looking for, there, there they are, yes, thank you. Our Parks Commission is doing a incredible joint project on getting this application together, so.
Okay, um, so I'm Pat Lesko, I'm on the Parks Commission, greetings, mayor, city council staff. Fellow citizens and uh. Yes, um, so actually, I'd like to talk about both resolutions, the next two. Because they're both pertaining to this grant, and they're both necessary for the grant. Which uh, we're applying for, it's from the Georgia Department of Natural Resources. Part of their recreational trails program, and it's in the new Riverlands Park. Um, Chattahoochee Hills has twelve hundred acres of parkland. It has many well-loved and well-used trails already, but there's not one trail that meets the accessibility guidelines. Of um, the Architectural Barriers Act. Either within the city or within our neighboring's uh, communities in South Fulton County. So the proposed trail, which we are calling the Wheel Beautiful Riverlands Scenic. Universal Access Trail, just for the purpose of the grant, anyway, um. It'll fill a need by providing ready access to nature and stunning views of the Chattahoochee River. For all ages, from toddlers to seniors, whether they be on foot, perhaps in a stroller or in a wheelchair. It will be a nearly level, one mile, roughly one mile trail. Uh, that runs along the ridge line above the Chattahoochee River. And will pass through various habitats, including the forests and, or I should say woodlands and meadows. And it will pass by a wildflower pollinator meadow. It'll make a large loop at the north end, and will have a turnaround at the south end, we're planning a six-foot width. That will um, allow easy passing and also allow people to walk side by side. I should say travel side by side, and uh, some of the features along the trail will be. Viewing platforms with benches, one of them will be covered, and a picnic table. So the Wheel Beautiful Trail dovetails nicely with the Camp and Paddle Trail Site. Which is also in the city's Riverlands Park, and that's part of the one hundred mile Chattahoochee Riverlands Greenway Project. Study, the Camp and Paddle Trail Site is currently being constructed, or at least we had the groundbreaking a few weeks ago. Um, by Trust Republic Lands with a grant from the Georgia Outdoor Stewardship Program. With an estimated completion date of next spring. And that project will provide accessible restrooms and an accessible parking lot for the trail we're proposing. So the two. Resolutions that are before you are required for our grant application, which is due at the end of this month. Um, and. One, oh, one authorizes the city to apply for the grant, and the other commits the city to taking care of the trail. Long-term maintenance, if we get the grant and it's built. Okay.
Perfect, all right, can I, can I get a motion in a second, I'm gonna go ahead and call these together, because as Pat said. One is the actual uh, permission to go out and get the grant, and the second is then we take care of the trail once we get the grant, which they need to know so they can get the grant. So if I could get a motion in a second, please, to adopt twenty-three dash oh four seven, which is the resolution. To actually get the grant in twenty-three dash oh four eight, which is the resolution then to take care of the trail that the grant makes, uh, please, motion in a second.
Make a motion that we accept uh, both of these motions, uh, uh, these uh, items as presented, excuse me.
I second it. We have a motion in a second, and then. Uh, or I'm, I'm gonna move around. You have a question?
Uh, I did, um, just, just wanted to know, since the grant is due at the end of the month, do we need a something or other for. To authorize you to sign it, sometimes you do that as a resolution.
Once, once this is done, I can sign it for them.
Okay.
Anything else? If not, all those in favor of adopting twenty-three dash oh four seven and twenty-three dash oh four eight, the grant application and. Our commitment to maintain, uh, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, that carries nims, say thank you so much for all that work. Uh, because I know a lot of work went into that and will continue to, and so thanks in advance for the continuing work, too.
And thank you for the support.
Just in case they give up, I wanna call out uh, three people in the room right now and commend them. You know, I've been reading a lot about how it's important for kids to be bored, right, like kids need to.
Oh, there's kids in the room.
And there are three beautiful children in the back row back there that are watching this meeting. Uh, and are being so quiet and probably bored out of their minds. And I just want to commend that, that is fantastic, thanks mom and dad for bringing them, thank you guys for being here. And behaving so well, uh, and, and my apologies for the fact that it's probably the most boring thing, but it's important, so again, thanks for being here. Uh, next up is twenty-three dash oh four nine, which is an ordinance to amend chapter ten, which is our short-term rental regulation. Uh, we talked about that in the work session, and if you'll recall, too, it's a very small change that we're making uh, about. The uh, the waiting list, and then Rick, uh, we also talked about a piece Dana brought up, uh, something that is not. Enforceable or relevant, and we pulled out one sentence on that, and everybody has the revision. And we talked about it in the meeting in front of them, so if I could, Dana, do you wanna say anything else about that, or? I think it's pretty clear.
Um, I, I think you pretty much said anything, it was mostly to clear up um, how the waiting list. Works when a property sells.
Mm-hmm. Uh, so if I could, get a motion in a second, please, to adopt twenty-three dash oh four nine as amended?
Make a motion to adopt twenty-three dash oh four nine as amended, second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I heard everybody, that's unanimous, next is twenty-three dash oh five oh, which is a T S F O S uh, bid award. Who's talking about that, is that Robbie?
Good evening, again, Mayor Council, hey, um, T S F O S, I know, I, I'm glad you brought up that we had some, um, some kids in the room, the future. Elected officials or future staff, um, and I think it's important for us as staff members to not. Say D C T, T D R, D M O, H N T, and now T S F O S. That's transportation, special purpose, local options, option tax, sales tax. So there's a lot of acronyms in government, if you look at our budget document, which is an award-winning budget document, by the way, by the G F O A. Government Finance Officers of America, G F O A, another acronym, acronyms in the back of that, it's a requirement for the budget document to have the acronyms in there, so we. Because we talk that way, which is not good. But T S F O S, as Mayor mentioned earlier, uh, we're gonna be doing some roads, a lot of roads, micro-surfacing first. This is phase two, I talked about it in the work session, that we tried to do one bid in phase one, and included some F D R. Full-depth reclamation of Rico Road, that repairing it, uh, we couldn't get a bid on that. Full-depth reclamation of Rico Road, that repairing it. Uh, we couldn't get a bid on that because. The award-winning bid went to a micro, micro-surfacing contractor. So we're going to, we did it again, phase two, came in for three hundred ninety-one thousand dollars and some change to do. Full-depth reclamation repair on Rico Road from South Fulton Parkway to uh, Hutchison Ferry. Then that's also gonna have to get micro-surface, it's gotta be repaired first. So we're hoping. If the timing works out, we can go back to the first contractor that's doing the micro-surfacing. Uh, Piedmont Paving is who I want you to award this bid to, by the way, for T-Sploss two. The micro-surfacing is done by Asphalt Paving Incorporated. We'd like to go back to them and see if we can come to you with a change order and say, hey, they're already mobilized. Can we go ahead and micro-surface this? If not. It may not work out in timing. They gotta do it in the spring. But we want to do more in the spring anyway. I want to come back to you with more micro-surfacing in the spring. Because we promised we're going to do a lot of roads for the city and we want to do that. We, we've been saving up our T-Sploss and our reserves for this very purpose. And that's what we want to. You know, get back to the council because that's what you've been budgeting for. But tonight before you is uh, I, I, having you act on. Awarding this bid and I can give a notice to proceed to Piedmont Paving. In order to move forward with the full-depth reclamation of Rico Road for three hundred ninety-one thousand dollars. And five hundred and ten dollars plus, um, five percent is goes toward uh, professional services, which are engineering fees. Yeah, it fluctuates, but typically it's around five percent. So we always make sure we have to put that in there as well.
And Robbie, full, full-depth reclamation means they mill it down and.
Yes, sir.
Start over. Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, I was just looking at the cost tonight.
Yeah, and they use uh, you know, they use uh, for, I think it's Daryl can say four foot. Yeah, four foot cutter heads. And they go and they mill it down. And so it'll look, look patchwork like and and like the mayor said, there'll be some disruption and such.
And and I didn't think about this in a workshop, so I do apologize. But the Millings, what, what are they doing with the Millings? Is that part of, are they taking them and that's part of their? I'm just.
No, no, it's good. No, Daryl.
No, it's. It is, it is valuable.
Daryl, uh, yeah, Daryl does a good job and negotiates that as part of the contract that, but they're gonna take some of the millions. But if you go back in our yard, our public works yard, we keep a lot of that because Daryl uses that for further maintenance on our gravel roads and our parks. So yes, we, we use those.
Okay, yeah.
And it's shorter for them to bring them here than it is somewhere else.
Right.
Shorter distance.
I should have asked that about in the workshop. I didn't think about it.
It's a good question. It's a win-win though.
Alright, let me go ahead and get a motion in a second, please to adopt twenty-three dash oh five oh, which is the paving bid.
Make a motion, we adopt twenty-three dash oh five oh.
Second it.
We have a motion in a second. Any further questions, discussion? Not all those in favor, please say aye. Uh, I think I heard everybody there. Yeah, so that's unanimous. Twenty-three dash oh five one is the approval of the purchase of one Ford Police Interceptor S U V.
Uh, thank you, Mary. Yeah, excuse me. This, this is a budgeted item. This is part of our. Two vehicle on the odd years, one vehicle on the even years. Um, purchasing, it's a budgeted item. And this is, you know, our fleet is starting to get a little bit old. And uh. So yeah, this, this will replace one, one of our older vehicles.
Great. Uh, can I get a motion in a second, please to adopt twenty-three dash oh five one?
Make a motion to adopt twenty-three dash oh five one.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions? If not, all those in favor of adopting twenty-three dash oh five one, the purchase of one Ford Police Interceptor, please say aye. That is unanimous as well. Stan's approved. Uh, thanks, Kevin. It's a, a big deal. When we moved to that system, we've now got. Not as new as we might like, but they're much newer than they were at one point. Police cars for everybody. Uh, next up is an approval of the contract with judicial judicial correction services for probation supervision. Is that Kevin or Robbie talking about that?
I will, because I'm closer. Yeah, this is a, an agreement with our probation services. Um, I believe they are going up in their services, but again, it's no cost to the city. They pass that on to the people that. Um, are on probation.
It's the same vendor we've been using. We're happy with.
Correct. It's the same vendor we've been using for as long as I've been here.
Can I get a motion in a second, please, to adopt twenty-three dash oh five two, which is the contract for the probation supervision?
Make a motion to adopt twenty-three dash oh five two.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of adopting twenty-three dash oh five two, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. That carries unanimously. Uh, next up is. A change in the time of the November work session because of the advanced voting and the actual election for Dana.
Okay, yeah. Um, when we set the uh, work session and city council meeting schedule last December. We didn't realize we were gonna have the opportunity to do early voting here at City Hall. Because of that, there is a conflict with our November second work sessions. Um, we discussed this at the work session last week and I think everyone kind of thought November ninth, which is. The Thursday after the election when we'll actually have the city council meeting at six, that we will do the work session at four o'clock that day.
And again, this is one of those things where they had, they had had early voting, uh, I think in Palmetto before. It was far away.
It was at the Palmetto Library. Um, they did not want to, Fulton County didn't want to use the library this year. Um, so.
Well, and this is much more convenient for.
Yeah.
Chat Hill citizens anyway, so. Uh, could I get a motion in a second, please, to adopt twenty-three dash oh five three, which is that scheduled change?
I make a motion that we adopt twenty-three dash zero five three.
A second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Not all those in favor, please say aye. Uh, I heard everybody there, so uh, that passes unanimously. Next up is twenty-three dash oh five four, which is authorization for the mayor to sign an agreement with Blue Line Solutions. Uh, about automated school hour speed limit enforcement. Now, we talked about this in the work session. This is one of those for the, the agreement isn't here yet, so it's authority to sign once it comes. Uh, but. Kevin?
Yeah, okay. So uh, like I spoke at last. Uh, meeting and last work session when we talked about doing the traffic plan and for Lori, Richie and Ruby, I included the booklet. That I included for everybody else during the work session because you guys couldn't be there. But I also have the representative for Blue Line Solutions is on Zoom. If you have any questions, because I know you guys didn't get a chance to look at the book. Um, but also on the first page of the book, you have this handout, which is the traffic study. And that's what I had mentioned at the uh, work session that during the traffic study, six thousand cars were found to go. In the, during the, during the traffic study. Of those six thousand, four thousand were found to be speeding. So just about seventy-five percent.
This is in the school zone at the school.
In the school zone at the school. And for purposes of this, speeding is eleven miles over the posted speed limit. So it's not considered speeding unless they're doing eleven miles over the posted speed limit. Of those four thousand. Seventy-two percent or twenty-nine hundred, we're doing at least fifteen miles over the speed limit. So, yeah, that's a, that's a very large number. Um, so based on that, I hoping and I'm recommending that we. Sign with Blue Line Solutions. Again, there is no cost to the city. Um, it's their equipment. They will come, they will set it up, they will put up the signs, they will put up the, the, the um, the camera system. And they were monitoring and like it's a. For lack of a better term, it's a profit sharing. You know, we get sixty-five percent of the ticket, they get thirty-five percent and that's how they pay for it.
So what's it set at? You said, what, what's it set at?
I'm sorry.
The speed limit on that thing. What are they gonna start giving people tickets at?
During the school hours, it'll be twenty-five miles an hour. So, so they have to be doing thirty-six to get a ticket.
Okay, because this is the one down there by Berlum B Smith. He sent, sent me a couple for like five or six over. I was like, really?
Yeah, this is ten, so.
Yeah, I.
There, there are a couple of other things too.
So, no, no, it's fine. So. Under state law and the state law is in there for it, to write a speeding ticket. Um, a police officer has to give you eleven miles over. There are exceptions to that. One of those is a school zone. However, for an automated. Um, system such as this, they have to honor the eleven miles over this, the posted speed limit. There are some. Fallbacks and catches, if you will. So in your case where you got the ticket, you, you have a right to contest that ticket.
I did. I didn't pay you.
Okay, so when that happens, what will happen is they will send a list to our court clerk. Who say, okay, these people want to contest the ticket. And then she will put it on the docket. And then. We can look at it and see, well, this ticket was issued only five miles an hour, so we can void out the ticket right away. Um, or you can come to court and you can, can talk to the judge and you can, because. With any, with any ticket that we write, any, any charge that we make. It is our job to prove that you did it, not your job to prove you didn't do it. So there are fallbacks to that. So in case someone gets a ticket that. They didn't, you know.
No, Kevin, I get it. I mean, I know when, you know, at the workshop, I was on zone. And listening to the numbers were, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, listen to numbers. That was shocking. But also that tells me that's been a problem. In my opinion, long before you came up here, I used to go over there to that school and deal with this, do a deal with that. Uh, thi- this is a problem. Either, either we're not policing it hard enough. Maybe Mr. Muhammad needs another drive or something. I, I, I don't know. I don't know what the solution is. But it's been a ten-year-old deal. And that tells me we've made no headway. If that, if that's really the numbers.
So I have a meeting with Mr. Muhammad tomorrow. This is, I have some ideas and some thoughts. This is one of the things that I want to implement that will help. Because if I can have this monitoring the speed, I can have officers doing something else, directing traffic. And being out there visible and.
Directing his traffic. See, I, I don't want our officer directing that traffic. I want our officer riding around our, our neighborhood. I want him.
I understand that.
He's a privately run school. They made that real clear.
Right.
Let them hire somebody. Is that, is that off, off the chart?
It, it's not, but that's not my decision to make. That's his decision to make. However.
It is his decision.
If the traffic.
But if he, but if he chooses not to do what's in the best interest of traffic and his cars and all that stuff, does that mean you automatically have to get involved?
For the safety of our citizens that are traveling on that road, yeah, I, I would have to get involved to at least alleviate the traffic that's in front of the school. And, and if I have to do that, then I'll do that. But this will allow me. To focus on different aspects. And that's something I can bring up with them when I have a meeting with them tomorrow.
No, no, I, I, I'm all for it. I get it. I understand these things. I understand. It's obvious that it's needed. I'm just in shock that that's where we're at ten years later. That, that, that means there's no improvement. That, that school zone is just, woo, is what it is. So that's all.
I understand, I understand what you're saying.
Everything else is kind of shocking to me. Either, either they're not listening or they don't, they don't care. They just figure, well, we'll let Chat Hill's police deal with it. Who knows? I don't want to die on dealing with it. That's, that's their school.
No, I understand that. I understand that. I can't speak on before me. This is one of the ideas that I came up with to help alleviate that problem.
No, great. I just wanted to let you know where I was at, sitting up there for fourteen years, dealing with that school. Unbelievable.
I know, I get it.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Um, so I know that it's been several years. We, we put in requests for uh. Some speed limit reductions. Was this one of them, Tom?
Yes, well.
So that's my question. If, if, if G dot has not approved our request for speed limit reductions, can we give tickets?
So this is different because this is a school zone.
Okay.
Okay. Yes, the school zone. What, what, what you're referring to is reducing the normal speed limit. The speed limit in the school zone is already reduced.
Already, okay.
Yeah.
And Chief, I know we might be running a little askew here, but just out of curiosity, um. If, um, if G dot doesn't approve it within a certain amount of time, do we have any authority to, to go ahead and implement a reduction?
So, on this, on this case, G dot isn't involved because this isn't a G dot road.
I got you.
The only people that would be involved on this is the school superintendent, which he's already signed off on other programs with this company. So I don't see that being an issue in us.
Okay.
But the speed limit issue is a different issue.
Correct.
This is, this is.
Totally different.
Right.
To, to be clear too, just for the citizens to. Part of why I think we all agreed about this is that ninety percent of the violations were during school hours.
Correct.
Right? People rushing to school and back. So this is not Chat Hill citizens speeding by the school.
That is, that is correct.
For school, rushing back and forth, right?
That is correct.
And, and the fact that we would have this in place to mitigate that problem. Does allow the officers to go down like to the intersection of River Town and make sure the legal U-turns aren't being made. And that's right. So it does give us the opportunity to address some of these other issues that we've been hearing for a long time. And. They have these things now at a lot of schools all over the place, because this is not a problem that's unique to us. It's just a problem that happens around schools. It's, it's reality, right? And this is how you address the problem. It's what we're hoping.
Well, I'm all for putting some of it on Hutchison Ferry just to monitor some of it, just to build a case for maybe a couple more police officers.
I, I, I wish we could, but unfortunately the law doesn't allow for, for. Uh, photographing of certain speed limits other than the school zone.
Chief, thank you so much for doing that.
So. Can we, uh, we've got a motion in a second. All those in favor of adopting this, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, that.
We didn't.
Sorry, can I get a motion in a second? Do we start talking about it without a motion?
I.
It's been a long.
But anyway, let's, let's do it again. Motion in second. For twenty-three dash oh five four.
Make a motion for twenty-three dash oh five four.
Second it.
We have a motion in a second. Uh, we've talked about it quite a bit. All in favor of adopting twenty-three dash oh five four, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. Uh, next up is Mayor and Council comments. Um, and I'm trying to remember which side I started on last time and I cannot. So. Uh, Troy Bettis, do you have any comments tonight?
Yeah, yeah, I, I'd just like to say that I, that I am very, very concerned with the process of. How we're going about this development. I know we've hashed it out, hashed it out, hashed it out. Has been one of my concerns since I got involved with council. Is process of development. And uh, it doesn't seem like we've made a whole lot of progress in that. Um, I mean, just for one point, just for people to realize and people understand this commonsensically. Um, if we allow all of this build out at, at the rate that we seem to be allowing it at this point. Uh, just one common sense point, our, our roads are not gonna hold up period. I mean, our dirt roads are not gonna be able to handle this magnitude. And this uh, this huge increase in traffic that we're fixing to see. Um, and that's just one point. But um, other than that, I appreciate the staff. I appreciate uh, the people more than that. There's a lot of uh. A lot of interest here of late. Uh, keep your interest in what's going on in this city, please. Please, it is uh, it, it, you know, my sister's already said it, uh, it takes a village. It takes all of us as a community. We've got to be um, more transparent, I believe, and more forthcoming. Uh, and I'm not saying that all of that lays at the feet of in, one individual or any of that nature, but I believe that uh. We're going at a breakneck speed and, and I think we're getting the cart ahead of the horse. On a lot of this, but we've got to slow it now. And I'm gonna do everything I can. Uh, in the time that I have here to uh, keep working that way so that the people could stay informed. I know, uh, not too long ago, a couple of years ago, we were, uh, Councilman Schmidt and myself were trying to. Get a newspaper involved and find a viable means to communicate. I mean, how many people in here read the Noon and Times Herald? I mean, seriously, I mean, okay, one person. I don't. Uh, and that's where we're, you know, we're issuing our mandated uh, announcement that we're gonna be doing some of this stuff. But uh, we had a viable means lined up to have a newspaper that was put out here. And, and you know, it's just sad that we were not able to push that through. Uh, to be able to communicate with you all. Um, I know I've done all I can to communicate. So uh, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, yeah. So, since Troy was talking, I was just thinking about a few things he was talking about. But I mean, as far as a newspaper, if anybody really wants to get out there and create your own private newspaper. You can do that. And I don't, I think that's often um, how, what some cities and citizens might do. That might, you know, if you can get articles and, and put that together. I don't never have been against that, that process. Um, also, what's?
I said, uh, I, I, yeah, just keep going.
Um. Also, as far as the, the, these couple of projects are going to me, they aren't building, they're getting the, the approvals to then build. This will take years to build out. As we've seen, it's Serenby is still building. They have, and when I'm looking at both of the projects, they've got what fifty-six percent and seventy-one percent so far, what I can see as, as. Uh, open space in both of the projects, which is what we need to preserve land around the city. Um, they both would activate the T D R program. Uh, I'm just throwing out some things. I think when we're, there's some, the processes it works in my mind is we'll have time to look at conditions. As it go, walks through planning and. The other, the other piece I also wanted to mention is, think about it's ma, they're both maintaining buffers. I mean, initially, when I was. Hearing about some of these projects, my concern was, wha-what types of things are they gonna be asking for, right? What do we have to bend on? What's gonna be kind of. Asked of us. And in this case, a lot of that was pulled back in and they're agreeing to those terms upfront. Um, which I feel like is, is a good concession. And then allowing us to have conversations around. Um, community-like things like paths, paths, right? Parkways. We have extra land that has been. Uh, donated around the cemetery, uh, for example, on the Merrill Project that I've been able to see. But to me, this is an initial step. I can see what we're working towards and I, and I, and I'm, uh. Just a lot of discussions about land use, but I also believe that people that own the land have the right to. But I also believe that people that own the land have the right to develop. Just as much as we have the right to live here. Under our conditions and under our zoning. Thank you.
Uh yeah, both of those things are are. Certainly worth uh consideration and you know, especially on a long road trip, fifteen hour drive back from Chicago. Had plenty of time to study impact fees and zoning um. And I guess I approach it a little differently. Um when an application comes in, how I look at it is, is there a way to say no? Because if there's not a legal way to say no, then there's only one other answer. So uh quite a lot of time, like it or not, has been spent on developing this comprehensive plan and zoning. That codifies the plan. And when an applicant comes in, it these pre-application meetings start quite early. That's the first thing they want to do is say, tell me about your zoning. I got a plan. I want to see if it works. And it you know, I used to feel the same way, like why are the citizens the last to know about this? You know, I I've been on that other end too and been kind of, you know. Suspicious about it. But just just even talking to um the one developer yesterday. Where she had several different options she'd been considering over the past two years. And oh my gosh, if every single one of those options was made public. It would be called stirring the pot. People would be freaking out and they would not be able to keep track of what the developer was doing. And uh trying to find the best option, the best builder, the best use for the plan. Bootcart's been doing that for decades, hasn't he, Tom? And you know, it it takes a while. So. I appreciate knowing that now. And that when they're ready, it makes it fairly easy when our zoning is spelled out to say, and I've asked Mike, you know, what's the checklist on this? It's fairly easy on the one hand because there's absolutely no variances. It's textbook hamlet. We have said what we want in the city is hamlets. It's textbook hamlet. On the village, we haven't done a village before. So yeah, I'm shaking to my knees. We've had, we've done a hamlet, so I kind of understand how that goes. And Steve and I are going to be in the first one. Bless his heart. Someone had to be the first one. And go through this whole process. But now that we've got that done, at least we can see what that process is and how it fits our zoning and what it's going to look like. The village is a whole other thing because it's it's set to bring the commercial aspect that our community needs. Um any community needs. And and uh. When when I saw the last revision, I go, wait a minute, where's all the details? I don't understand. How do I approve what I don't know, what I can't see? It looks like a topographical map with some blobs to me, you know? But what we're being asked to approve is, does this meet the zoning for a village? And there's a checklist for that. And there's, you know, the setbacks and. The windows, buffer windows, you can see from here and there that it's got to be on the parkway. Check, 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 check. So um. And thank you, Mr. Merrill, because we have just gone through several. We want to see it this way. Now we want to see it that way. We want to see it that way. Anyone who's a developer here probably is rolling their eyes a little bit or trying not to. Because that costs quite a lot of money to go back to the drawing board and say, okay, well, they really didn't like this. So now we've got to redo this. And I just want to say, um I appreciate that. And I'll just do two more minutes, but on my long ride back from Chicago, we went through New York, we went through Ohio, Indiana, and then um. Villages in Chicago. And I could see towns that were truly rural, not just keep it rural, bona fide rural. And they're big honking family farms on both sides of the roads. They were mostly row crops. I didn't see that many animals. These people were heavy duty into into farms. There was no keep it rural. They were rural. But they also didn't have any stores, no gas stations. Um I don't know how close the nearest um airport was or hospital. But I mean, we drove through miles and miles and miles and didn't see any of that. And then as the landscape changed, we come to other towns that were still kind of rural. But it was easy to see that the farmers had sold half half of their property on the other side of the road. And now that was subdivisions. And you could see those subdivisions. They're not buffered. They're just bona fide there on the hill, you know, line them up, right? And then um you get to other little towns where there is one big farm left and everything around it is built up. And that one happened to be that one farm that was left was a quilting store. So I went in there and I was asking her, what did this used to be? She said it used to be a dairy and they're the last man standing. Finally up to uh Chicago to visit the Sock Monkey Museum in uh Long Grove Village. And we stopped in there and there's this town center with this grassy area and. All these houses that looked like rural two-story houses, but they were businesses. And I thought, this is so cool. This must be like a really old town. How did that happen? And it wasn't. We looked at the houses and they were built in the sixties and seventies. And so I wanted to look at the zoning and say, what do they got? What's their secret? How they how they make this happen? When they decided to incorporate in nineteen fifty-six, they're one year younger than I am. They did go through a lawsuit because a developer just wanted the kit and caboodle to develop the whole town. But they won that out. And the first thing they did was they set up zoning. So residential could only build on one, three and five acres. And I thought, well, that's pretty cool because this looks like a bona fide small town. All built on one, three and five acres and it had a traditional zoning area for commercial and one for industrial. But it didn't look anything like Chattahoochee Hills. On one, three and five acre residential lots in the whole little town, there is no more ruralness. It's now a small townness. What it looks like. So that's just something. That we consider, we're going to have to consider, the next council's going to have to consider. Not just our developers, but also our residents that are asking us to change the zoning again. And we're going to take a look at that. Whoever is going to be up here is going to take a look at that. We've asked to see the map. Show us what. If everyone could subdivide their rural land into three acres, what does that look like anymore? Does that look like? Um Long Grove Village in Chicago or Smyrna? Anyway, I don't know. It's it's a, it's another topic I'm. Interested in talking about and knowing. Because we don't know. None of us are professional developers up here and we're going to make mistakes and we're not saying we know everything. We're doing the best we can. No matter who sits up here, unless Mike decides to run for office. Is going to know. But just wanted to let you know that we're doing the best we can and um appreciate all this effort and the zoning. Um the planning commission and the zoning staff. Thanks.
Excellent. Richie?
Great. Thank you, sir, for all you did. Know you got here and man, I know you've been through a lot and uh. Just thank you for what you did. Rest of the staff. They do do a good job. I know I give you a part time sometimes. Um anyway. Just re- real quick, folks, just real simple. This is, this is your town, okay? Me personally, um you know, to govern in any town. In our town, it takes three votes, okay? It also takes three people to have a conversation. That's what you need to understand. I can bring up a topic. Uh Ms. Ruby can chime in. Nobody else chimes in. We ain't got three. We ain't talking. Okay, I'm going to address a few questions that have come my way. Um since this election's popped up, you know, it's been, I've been asked a lot of times why I have not brought back up the one house for twenty acres. Um and I made that real clear to a few of that I talked to. It's because it takes three to talk about it. And I know another council member brought this up a couple of months ago. If they wanted to put that on the docket, they could. That's the only way I can talk. I've brought up fourteen things that needed to be discussed or some items should have been tabled. Um but you but you see what you got, folks. This is what you got. If this is what you want, keep them in their seat. That's your choice. If you want to learn how to preserve your own property, which is actually what you already do, you bought it, you pay your taxes on it. But now you get to allow a government to tell you what you can and can't do on it to a certain extent. Um I don't know how that works. But I know in this town, if you want your rights back, you better replace a couple of these seats up here or you ain't getting them back. Because your rights were taken from you. You cannot divide your land. You can get a hamlet, you can do this. And I'm sure when Tom speaks, he'll tell, uh whatever. Come up here and try to give your kid five acres. It ain't happening. Okay, unless you were pre oh seven and your land is signed on, okay? I don't care if you live in a village or hamlet. I don't have a problem with it. Nobody, when this place first started, would have ever imagined having fifteen or twenty of these hamlets. The idea was three big ones. You want to get back to the original comp plan and talk about that. Oh. No, not true. There we go. Not true. We're all we're all confused. Either way, folks, bottom line is get in your car and ride around your town. This is, this is five months. In Chattahoochee Hills, I think Mr. Schaefer said it perfectly. You ready to quadruple your population? That's up to you. You control who you put in these seats. And if you don't. And sometimes you get what you deserve. I'll never have a neighbor. I'm by the hooch. The rest of you will. Because what Troy mentioned today, people need to take heed. You can have a hamlet every five hundred feet in this town. I trust you to preserve your land. That's what you've been doing. And uh I think you need to make that decision in November. And some of you that I haven't gotten back to, I apologize. Uh and another thing, I do not do social media. If you've got something to say about me, call me. What is wrong with you people that hide behind that screen? Be an adult. Call me. You want to know what I think? I'll tell you. I'll tell you straight to your face. The problem is you won't tell me. And then you sit there and you won't even stand up for what's yours. And then you let your rights get taken. It's up to you guys. And I'll end it as always. Go dogs. Amen.
Good evening and thank you um everyone for coming out tonight. Uh Mike, I did have a question. Um. Did the MURR uh project show where the park trails connect? Like for the park trail, does it show on the um?
Yes, there's some trails. I think they're um. Kind of notional, um but yet there are some trails shown on that on that plan. Um the one, the one in particular that connects on the east side of Cockermill Road goes down under the park. I'm sorry, under the parkway and then connects down through um through the Palmetto property. Uh is included on there, of course, only to the extent of that site, but yeah.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Um the other thing is um we are having an Oktoberfest, uh October the fourteenth. Um hopefully, um everyone will be able to come out to see. And thank you.
You go on.
I gotta go. I got a question for me. Will not be here for your town, honey. Sorry. Y'all have a good evening.
Greg, I'm going to call out again uh the fact that your. Amazing level of service continues even as you're going through all the personal things you've been going through and um. Just want to leave that where that is. Uh Pat, if he's still here, thank you for. Well. Again, we we operate above our weight with our public safety crew and and particularly fire. Um it's the one that probably has the most. Urgent contact with people and uh people see them in times of crisis often and and uh we're we're lucky to have the group that we have. Uh I've noticed Graystone, not Graystone, CCCC or whatever it is, the company working for Graystone, trucks running uh. Fiber all over the town. It's one of the things that we've been talking about for years and years that I made a priority and and for years tried to get to happen. I'm just excited to see the wires coming all over the place. Quick thank you to Denise and Tamara for working on the forums. It's important to go to those forums. Uh it's important to understand. What people's positions on things are for sure. Uh you know, somebody posted an interview that I did uh for some magazine ten years ago. And I want to, I want to thank them for posting that because God, I look so much better than I did back then. I was a butterball back then. And so. I'm I'm glad they put that picture up on the internet. It's me just how well I've done. Yeah, well, I haven't done that well yet. Uh. There, there is so much that's said in these meetings. Um and you know, there there's this narrative that, you know, I bring things up and. And I want to talk about it. And it's an interesting narrative. Um if it were true, it'd be even more interesting. But there are so many of these things that we have talked about at length. Uh the idea of the city newspaper, right? We need a. City newspapers that we can have a legal organ right in the city. And the city attorney made very clear that the city's personal newsletter can't be the legal organ. It has to be an independent newspaper. And we've had that conversation. We've had it several times. And the fact that people forget that we've had it, or maybe they just didn't like the answer, or the fact that there are laws that are bigger than the city's laws. I mean, I get it that that's sometimes the case, but it's just a fact, right? And you can't get past facts. The fact that, I mean, I keep hearing, well, they keep changing the zoning to make it easier for people. While most of what we've done is actually made it tougher, ask the developers. But if you go back and look at. The Fulton County overlay. And what it allowed, and you look at all of our comp plan processes and all the zoning since then. There's nothing that's happening right now that couldn't have happened twenty years ago. It's just that the market has gotten here, right? Two million more people coming to the Atlanta region. We're fifteen miles from the world's busiest airport. There's development literally happening on all sides of us. We went today to take a uh. Uh do a grand opening of our first historic marker sign in Chattahoochee Hills, right? Beautiful thing. When I was a kid, we'd pull over at every single one of those and we were showing that thing off today. And just driving over there on South Fulton Parkway, trying to make the left turn to get to Cochran Mill Park to unveil that thing. Had to wait for five minutes because there was so much traffic. Coming from the city of South Fulton, going to Douglasville has nothing to do with us. But I'll tell you what, our fire department's out there answering accents for those people all the time, right? So that impact is happening, whether we like it or not. South Fulton Parkway, an economic development highway put through the heart of Chattahoochee Hills long before Chattahoochee Hills existed. People bought thousands and thousands of acres to develop, right? That development anywhere else in the Atlanta region is what you see in places like Roswell and Alpharetta. And you know that the people in Alpharetta, the first time somebody came in and said, I want to put two thousand houses on this parcel. They all came out. And we're up in arms and said, we don't want this. We don't want this change. And their folks said, well, our zoning allows it because zoning everywhere allows it, right? And they didn't have any rules to prevent any of it. They didn't have any rules to buffer it. They didn't have things like transfer development rights. To pay people who aren't developing. They didn't do all that work. And every other place in Atlanta is paved over. We're the only place that isn't and we never will be because of our zoning. It's going to change, was always going to change. That is written into every piece of everything that we've put out. I was looking at my first campaign stuff. I'm going to start posting some of that. Because nothing has changed. People, I talked to Tom, you said that nothing was going to change. No. It was always development is coming. What we need to do is manage it for a better outcome than everybody else and we are doing that, right? And so again, I I yes, it's absolutely important that you think about who you're voting for and whether. They actually read that stack of stuff that comes through all the time because that is what happens here. That stack comes through all the time. Right? There's a lot of work here. You think you can do this in two to four hours a month? You're fooling yourself. And I'm only saying that because I don't like the disrespect that's put out. I mean, I'm fine with people taking their positions. I'm fine with people disagreeing with the zoning. I'm fine with people disagreeing with everything I say. But let's be respectful about it, right? So anyway, end of my little soapbox. Um I appreciate everybody being here. Could I get a motion in a second to adjourn the meeting, please? We have a motion in a second to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye. Okay, we stand adjourned and it is eight fifteen P M. We end every night with a town hall session. Which is the time to ask questions of staff and elected officials or issues that are not otherwise covered tonight. Uh if you've got some question about the zoning in your area or the 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 road that you've got, I mean, you know, for example, crossroads. Absolutely want to talk to the lovely lady who's talking something else right now about what's going on. I I would love to talk to you after the meeting for a minute, right? Because it's important when people stand up to lead in their community. So again, questions and yes, ma'am.
And that's what they're, that's what they're telling.
Anybody else? Yes, ma'am. That I, you know, somebody brought that up. I don't think that's correct. I don't think that's what the zoning says. And even if it does, right? If there's a requirement to take a vote and the developer says, hey, wait a minute, I'd like to slow this down. We can absolutely do that because we've done it before, right? So that is allowed. I mean, developer doesn't want to know vote if we're not ready to vote, right? So. It it's in everybody's interest to make sure everybody gets their questions answered and we have always done. it it's in everybody's interest to make sure everybody gets their questions answered and we have always done that.
Right.
No.
Right. The city and we can, we can amend. Is it purposes of this program?
Which are the posted hours? That's right. Everybody's leaving. Thanks for coming. Appreciate you being here. See you next time.
There's not an amendment.
There will be, yeah.
Because I always try to make sure that I
Oh, right.
So, so this, part of this program, you'll have a, you'll have one sign saying that you're about to enter a school zone, that you'll have another warning sign saying that, that this school zone is not allowed by a portal or
Don't let your kids sleep till I say something.
They have flashy lights warning you that you're about to enter. Then you'll see the camera. You're in the school zone and then it's, yeah, and then it'll be on the other side. So there's at least six warnings before you hit the school.
We had people blowing through there at ninety miles an hour. So like, we're, we're ready to do something about that.